Good evening to you all. It's my privilege to welcome you to our regular town council meeting for September, or at least for the second meeting in September. We're pleased that you all could join us tonight, and I thank you for complying with our request to wear masks. And by your seating arrangements, I believe everybody's physically distanced for sure. So, thank you all for being here. I'm going to recognize Mayor Pro Tim Behringer, who will lead us in our pledge, and also she will have our invocation. Ms. Behringer?
If you'll join me.
I lead to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Father God, we come before you humbly tonight and ask for your wisdom as we make decisions, as we go about our lives, but most importantly this evening, right now, that we make the best decisions possible for our town. And Lord, we ask for you to calm the unrest in our land, to protect our citizens, and to bring peace and justice in the climate that we're living in. We pray for our frontline workers, our police, our firefighters, our doctors and nurses, all those people that put their life on the line every day to take care of their fellow citizens. We ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Behringer. The first part of our meeting this evening will be an opportunity for you, if you're here, to make petitions or comments. We usually ask you, if you will, to sign up with the town clerk. But let me just give you a little instruction in regards to this. This portion of the meeting is to receive comments from the public on items not included on the agenda. As I mentioned, we ask you to sign up with the town clerk if you will do that. The board, this council, is interested in hearing your concerns but may not take action or deliberate on subject matter brought up during the petitions and comments segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. And this evening, after we finish the initial part, there's an add-on to that that I want to do this evening in recognition of a special person. But having said that, Ms. Clerk, did you have any persons who signed up with you?
No, sir, we did not.
Okay. So, at this point, I will open it up. If there are members of the audience who came this evening desiring to make any petitions or comments, if you'll raise your hand, I'll recognize you and ask you to come to the podium. Okay, so you're seeing or hearing none. Then I'd like to take a few minutes for this council, primarily if there's somebody else who would like to do this. Most of you probably know by now that our former mayor, Ronnie Williams, passed away on Saturday of last week. Due to COVID circumstances, sort of the normal processes of a burial and a service was passed over. You'll be hearing something probably in the future about some things that the town will do in concert with the family. But I thought it would be only most appropriate this evening for me to give council members an opportunity to make any comments, observations. Many of these council members worked directly with former mayor Ronnie Williams, as I did, and so I'll have a privilege at the end of making a few observations. But at this time, I'm going to recognize any council members who would like to do that, and we don't have to go in any particular sequence, but I guess maybe just for orderly purposes, I can start down at this end. If you want to say something, that'll be fine. Keep your comments in a reasonable timeframe, I'm sure you will.
Yes, sir. I would just say that it was a pleasure to work with the former mayor, who everyone I know knew that he loved the town, and he was a great ambassador for the town, and I had the distinct privilege to be one of the last people he swore into office. So, I just want to say that his service is appreciated, and he epitomized, I believe, a citizen of Garner, a love for Garner, a defender of Garner. There was no doubt, I will never forget when he threw the stone for the red route, to say that he was David coming up against the Goliath of the Department of Transportation. And he stood his ground there, and stood it well, and his service is appreciated, and his spirit is appreciated, and his esprit de corps is appreciated. I'm sure it will live on.
Thank you, Mr. Vance. Dallinger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't have the opportunity to work with Mayor Williams, but even up to several years ago, in meeting him, he had encouraged me to get more involved, and I didn't take him up on it when he told me to, but I did a little bit later, and started coming to council meetings. And he was always very encouraging of participation in service. And I think everyone knows, no one loved Garner more than he did. So, it's an honor to be sitting up here in sort of his footsteps for all his years of service.
Thank you. Behringer?
Yes. I was able to go to Mayor Williams' visitation, and there was a video of things years past, pictures, and some of them from he was very young, when he was in the military. And I did recognize him, but that was interesting to see. And then it just occurred to me that his whole life was serving in one way or another. He served in Vietnam. When he came home, he went to work as a letter carrier, and back then, that was called having a job in civil service. And then eventually, he became involved in service for the town of Garner. So, that was where Ronnie was happiest, is when he was serving someone else, and he will be missed.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Singleton?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I served with Mayor Williams on this first of board alderman, now the town council, for 26 years, and I knew him before then, but of course, we've worked together on many things over the years. A lot of people don't realize that when Ronnie was first elected back in 1985, the town had decided to go, before that, they had, everybody had two-year terms on the council, the alderman, also the mayor. And they decided that year, they had staggered terms, and two people would be four-year terms, starting in '85, one of which was Mayor Williams, along with former mayor and alderman Don Rovall. So, he was one of the first two people on a four-year term for the council. And then in 2007, 2005, I asked the council to put a resolution on the ballot to people to let the mayor have a four-year term. I thought it was kind of odd that the council had a four-year term and the mayor didn't. It passed big, and it would start in 2007. So, when he got re-elected in 2007, he started serving the first four-year term as mayor. So, he served the first four-year term as a council member and also as mayor. And he served 34 consecutive years, which nobody else has served that many consecutive years for Garner. Mr. John served about 35 years. So, if you think about it, in the last 18, 19 months, we lost 69 years of service on here on this council from two people, two men who served on here for that many years. If you knew Mayor Williams, he loved Garner, he loved Friday night football games. I mean, he'd see the Friday night football game, he'd say, "Come over here, I'll talk to you." Then he'd go, I said, "Go work the crowd, go work the crowd." He said, "Got to do it." You know how Ronnie was, "Got to do it." He would talk, if he knew you, he would stop and talk to you at a football game. He didn't see much football game, as much as he did talking. He loved Christmas parade, he loved the event before Christmas parade, he loved Fireman's Day and the Fireman's Day Parade. He was a veteran, and he loved July 3rd, it meant a lot to him, as the Veterans' Day event the town has, and the Memorial Day event. He really enjoyed those quite a bit, having served, as Mr. Matthews and Mr. Vance have also served. So, he really enjoyed those quite a bit. And of course, if y'all knew about the Groundhog Day event, there aren't many people in Garner I know that enjoyed putting on a top hat and tails and having a groundhog whisper in his ear, but he sure got a kick out of the Groundhog Day event, as the kids did. I see I've got some else down here, too, I was going to mention. He enjoyed and was proud to be here, when we had the groundbreaking at Town Hall, and also to cut the ribbon for the new Town Hall, also for the opening of the police station, he was proud of that. It's a shame that he, both he and Mr. Johns, aren't going to be here one day when direction gets opened, but there'll be a plaque in there with their names recognizing them for being on the council when that was approved. So, if you knew the mayor, he loved Garner, he loved having a good time and a good laugh. And one last thing, he served with the rescue squad and also the fire department. One of his good friends, who he also worked with, with the postal service, was Richard Gully. If any of you knew who Richard Gully was, he was a piece of work, and he and Ronnie were really good friends, and he passed away last November. I told Richard's son, Tony, that there's no doubt that they're out there in heaven, slapping each other on the back and telling a story and telling a tale and making people laugh. Whether the story's true or not, it might be, you know, you never know, but they enjoyed getting together and having fun. And I'm sure that's what he's doing now. So, he served, as I say, 34 years with the town, the town council and his mayor, and did a really good job, probably did, and he loved it. I mean, he loved going to the elementary school and reading books to kids, he really did. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Thank you. Commandee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the honor of serving as an alderman for eight years with Ronnie, and it's like Grace said, every time we'd be out in public, he said, "You need to get out there and work the crowd, got to work the crowd, let them know who you are." And Ronnie and I shared a couple of things together. Both of us were Vietnam veterans, both of us had the pleasure of being on the fire department. But he was truly well-liked, and there was that class I was in, it was myself, Jackie Johns, Janice Stevenson, and Ronnie. And I found a black-and-white picture of when we opened fire station number three, and the four of us were over there, and I made copies, and I carried one to Ronnie. This was a few months ago, and we sat down and had a great time talking and reminiscing. I carried one to Jackie's son, and he was very pleased, and I carried one to Janice's daughter, and I got one on my mantle at home. So, as I was looking at it over the weekend, I was thinking, well, I'm the last one left in that picture, so we'll see how all that turns out. But Jackie called us the Dream Team, and I'll never forget that. But Ronnie's going to be missed, he did a lot for this town, he loved this town, and he didn't go nowhere that he didn't know somebody. So, Ronnie, I know you up there, and brother going to be missed, and we'll all be together one day soon.
Thank you. Thank you, council members. I'd like to take the privilege of noting a few things that I jotted down as I was thinking about Ronnie. If Ronnie had a motto, I'd say his motto was service. Service meant a lot to him, and he certainly gave a lot of service to this town. I came across a quote, which is attributed to Henry Ford, and he says, "You can't build a reputation on what you're going to do." Ronnie did not talk so much about what he was going to do, he just got out and he did it, and he did it for all those years, for over 30 years. He served as a public elected official in this town, a town that he loved and he bragged on often. Mr. Vance alluded to this, but I think of the many causes he was involved with that I remember or knew about, one that stands out in my mind was the I-540, the red route. And I remember going with him to several meetings, and he would always stand up when he had an opportunity and speak of the red route, and to him, it was like the plague, I think, it was such a bad thing. And so, through his influence and the influence of others, the red route was eliminated from consideration, as evidenced by where it is being built today. Ronnie's many years of service will be remembered as a standard that few, if any, will match. His passion for this town is something we could all strive to emulate, and so it is passing, we honor him and recognize both his leadership and his service. I believe these words spoken by Theodore Roosevelt in many ways capture the essence of Ronnie's life. Mr. Roosevelt said, "Do what you can with what you have where you are." And I believe that's what Ronnie did, and he did it for the town of Garner. May he rest in peace. If you will, join me at this time for a brief moment of silence, and you reflect on the life of Ronnie Williams and give thanks. Thank you very much. As we make other plans, perhaps at a future date, there may be some other public recognitions, but we'll work with the family in regards to that. So, we'll go back to our regular agenda now, and Madam Clerk, I guess I didn't ask you to call the roll, did I?
I'm happy to do that now.
Would you do that, please, ma'am?
Yes. Mayor Pro Tim Marshburn?
I'm present.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Marshburn?
Present, yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Behringer?
Here.
Councilmember Dallinger?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
And Councilmember Vance?
Here.
Okay, thank you very much. Council, the next item of business is the adoption of the agenda. You all have that before you there, either in hard copy or on your computer. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
They're moved.
Secured.
Okay, moved properly and secured. Any questions, comments, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor of adopting the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no, and of course, there is none. So, thank you very much. Our first item of business is under the heading of presentations, and I'm going to recognize Assistant Town Manager John Hodges, who will recognize some other folks, I believe. Thank you, John.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Joe Stallings, our Economic Development Director, could not be here tonight, so it's my privilege to introduce Mr. Jeff Swain. He is the chairperson for the Garner Economic Development Corporation. They're one of the nonprofit organizations that is our partners in facilitating our economic development efforts for the town. So, I'll recognize Mr. Swain for a special presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Swain?
Thank you, John, and good evening, Mayor Marshburn, town council members. It's good to be with you, and it is my pleasure to represent the Board of Directors this evening of the Garner Economic Development Corporation, to recognize two individuals who have made significant contributions to the Economic Development Corporation. And first, and I guess John is helping out here, first I'd like to recognize Ronnie Thompson. Ronnie, you want to come up and join us? And actually, Ronnie doesn't need much introduction to folks, he's a business leader in Garner and an owner of TT&amp;E. And Ronnie and I actually got involved with GEDC activities back almost at the beginning on the advisory board, and then we both joined the executive board here a short while ago, a couple of years ago. But during the time of Ronnie's involvement, his expertise and his knowledge from his own business and business in general made major contributions along the way, working, obviously, when we started with the Conagra site, with the buildings, and then moving all the way forward to the transition when Ronnie joined the board and became treasurer of GEDC. So, his contributions were invaluable to us, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Do you have a speech?
I don't. I would say, I do want to say, it's been an honor, a privilege, working on the GEDC board. It's been a long road, and I've met a lot of great people, and I just enjoyed everything I did on the board, so thank you.
Thank you, Ronnie.
Thank you, Ronnie. And second, Mayor Marshburn. Before being mayor, you served as the town council representative, I believe, on the GEDC board at its inception, which was about 10 years ago, I think. And during those years, you and others steered the corporation to the point where the celebrations were held with the sale of the property to Verizon. And subsequent to that, you, when Bruce Andrews left us, you assumed the role as chair of the board and helped to steer us through the transition period from the sale of Amazon, which was really the focal point for GEDC, to where we developed a work plan for the future, which I believe has been presented before the council at this point. And so, 10 long years of service to GEDC and making very significant contributions along the way, and we thank you greatly. I'll come to you, sir.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
I have a lot of respect for the position that you hold now. I was going to tell you that you have big shoes to fill, but I only wear a size seven and a half, so the shoes won't be too big. I'd be remiss, oh, okay, yeah, just a couple more comments. I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize also a gentleman who is still serving on the GEDC board, and that's Councilmember Elmo Vance, who was part of the original group, myself and him, and Bruce Andrews, who couldn't be with us this evening. But that was quite an interesting experience. It was a process that we served, I served over nine years, and our main focus was on marketing the old Conagra plan after the terrible explosion occurred out there. And I've often felt like that from that tragedy came triumph over time. It took a long time, but there was a lot of perseverance exhibited by the original board, and certainly by the Board of Directors, and so the board that is now functioning sort of has a new task. They have a new kind of a work plan, and they're going to be doing some things that this council will be hearing about, so their focus has changed, but they're still very much a viable part of our town. And so, thank you very much for the recognition, I appreciate that. Did you say we needed to take maybe one picture, John? Okay. If folks will indulge with us, let's do that.
Maybe.
Right here. Under the circumstances, I probably...
See, we're smiling, right? I appreciate that. Next item of business is the consent agenda, council. Do I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
They're moved.
Okay, moved and secured by Ms. Behringer. Moved by Mr. Vance, okay? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? And there is none, so I guess you already voted, didn't you? Okay, thank you. So, approved. Okay, we have one public hearing this evening, and then we have an item of new and old business. So, in just a few minutes, I will recognize Mr. Trezenberg and others to be sworn who expect to give testimony. But let me just give you a little introductory overview in terms of what we're about to do. This is a quasi-judicial hearing, which means it's more formal than regular public hearings. Under state law, the parties are entitled to a fair hearing, and so I will now inquire of the council whether any member has a fixed opinion prior to this hearing that is not subject to change, or any, in particular, ex parte communications, or any close familial, business, or other association relationships with an affected person or a financial interest in the outcome. If such is the case, would you acknowledge it now? Okay, hearing none, very good, thank you. So, this is a fact-finding hearing, and appropriate sworn evidence must be presented as a basis for whatever decision the town council makes. Opinion testimony is not appropriate factual evidence unless the witness is a recognized expert on the subject. Therefore, opinion testimony concerning such things as impacts on land values, traffic safety, or noise levels should be avoided unless the witness is a recognized expert based on training and experience. You're permitted to ask questions of other speakers concerning the factual testimony. Council members are only allowed to receive factual information about the cases in the hearing, and are not allowed to discuss the cases outside of the hearing. Please respect the time of all, and try to keep your comments within reasonable time. We usually ask that you do so within three to five minutes. So, at this time, if you expect to give testimony in this hearing, if you would see the town clerk back in this corner and let her swear you in, then we will begin the hearing.
You solemnly sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence you provide is the truth, the whole truth, and the theme of the truth. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to recognize our planning director, Mr. Jeff Trezenberg, who will be our initial presenter. Thank you, Mr. Trezenberg.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Mayor, members of the council. Normally, David and Stacy would be here. It's not that I ran them off or anything, but they did have familial engagements for tonight, so I am covering in their absence. But this is a project that most of you will be familiar with, as a version of it came before you approximately a year ago, and the applicant came to you also for a waiver of the one-year waiting period. As noted, it has been about a year since the previous one anyhow, but tonight, this comes back to you, and I'm going to try not to belabor some of the common stuff, although I will go through it, just for those who haven't seen it before, and focus primarily on what is different about this request versus the one you saw before. So, this is Kennedy Ridge. The applicant is still Dan Ryan Builders. The owners are John Boss Jr. Revocable Trust and Charles and Yolanda Chappelle. The location is on Creech Road, just north of the church and funeral home, and the entire tract is 16.4 plus or minus acres. When we looked at zoning for the property, here's just a general site map with the current, well, recent, I should say, aerial photography. The funeral home is located here, the church a little further to the south, you have Creech Road Elementary School across the way, and slightly to the south, School Acres subdivision, and North Garner Middle to the west. Here's the site from Google Street View, showing the Creech Road there as a two-lane Here is the current zoning right now, the property is zoned R-40. We do use that primarily in planning circles as a holding zone, as normally this would be reserved for well and septic type development. As you know, typically in the town, we do not promote well and septic subdivision, that's usually reserved for the county. To the north, you have existing R-9 zoning on this parcel right here, which is bounded kind of as follows. That is the Ashton Forest subdivision, that was approved just over two years ago by the Planning Commission, since the zoning was already in place, that went to them for final approval. I did check with engineering before the meeting, that subdivision has been inching forward. They did receive their construction drawing approvals this past May. To our understanding, though, I believe that the applicant that appeared before us is attempting to see if there is a buyer who is willing to actually build it. To the south and west and School Acres, we have R-12 zoning. Again, those homes are going to be on city water and sewer. Across the street, you have R-40 again, those Again, those homes are on well and septic. Not a whole lot of zoning changes in this part of town over time. There's been about five cases there. Most recently, you see the one that was denied for this project. I don't wanna say this project, but the similar project predecessor on August 5, 2019. Again, the existing zoning is R-40. Again, it's not a zone that we use a whole lot of, except to accommodate some uses that are appropriate for a rural setting, or can be appropriate in a rural setting. But the requested classification in this case is for multifamily residential one with conditions. That is the lower of our two multifamily districts in terms of density, and the specific request was for townhomes. They have also added cluster subdivision and condominiums to the list of requested uses, but the site plan reflects townhomes. So here are all of the permissible uses in the MF1 district. You can see that there's a list of about 20 different items. And then getting to their specific conditional proposal. Again, townhomes, condos, and residential cluster development are those that were picked out of that list we saw on the previous slide. We always advise a condition in there about group living that's protected by state or federal statute. We can't expressly exclude those, so we add those just to cover our bases. And then additionally, they have proposed the following zone conditions. These first five that you see are the same as what was presented in the case before. So we have at least a step or stagger in the buildings between each unit to avoid the bulkiness that sometimes when you get five or six of them together could represent. Each one will have a covered porch, minimum 30 square feet. Again, these are reflective of the least common denominator. Each dwelling unit will have at least a one-car garage, 1,450 square feet of heated gross floor area, and each of them will at least have two types of siding on the front, a pattern of siding, I should say. Number eight was modified slightly, but again, gets to the use of some masonry in the product line, so you can read through that one there. And then the last ones are new to what was presented in the previous case. So the side elevations was a concern of some of the council members last time, so they have made a commitment to include at least three windows on the end units facing a street. So that would include the sides of the building facing Creech Road, which would be kind of the entrance. Each townhome's unit's front door will use some kind of glass treatment, so it won't just be a solid door. You'll have either glass in the door, on the side, or at the top. Again, to address the entrance off of Creech Road and the kind of the beautification of it, a three-foot-tall landscape berm, measured, I'm not sure what it means by measured from the right-of-way, but it shall be provided along the frontage on both sides of the main Number 12, no consecutive units will use an open gable-style roof. So what that means is a lot of times, you'll get a forward slope of the roof. This will guarantee that there's at least some other kind of roof treatment on those buildings, so you'll get a gable facing the opposite direction, dormers, or other such treatment for visual interest. And then finally, each unit shall provide a minimum of 16-square-foot rear porch patio. We asked them to include something regarding the rear. The site does have some challenges with grading and retaining walls, so again, just keep in mind that while the majority may be much larger than that, there are a couple instances where that's probably about as big as they can go. This site did not trip our requirements for a TIA, but we did try to take a look at some additional data to try to present to you, just to give you a somewhat better idea of maybe what's going on out there. The site has approximately 350 feet of road frontage on Creech. In this area, as you saw in the picture from the street maps, it's a 22-foot-wide ribbon pavement maintained by NC DOT. There is an existing 60-foot right-of-way present. As noted, the TIA was not required, but looking back on the last 10 years of data, we're seeing a fairly consistent trend there of upper 4,000s in terms of daily traffic count. I imagine a lot of that probably is school-related, and I would imagine that the reason we're probably not seeing much fluctuation is that there's not been much in the way of development along that corridor at this time. So here, we did kind of take a new look at something for you. What we tried to do here was take a look at a segment of roadway, so we went from one major intersection to another major intersection. And so, those would be, going northbound would be at Sandford, on going southbound, that would be at Garner Road. There's really no other major intersections between there. So again, we know that there's slightly under 5,000 vehicles per day currently. From there, we took a look at those parcels that would be likely to have their primary access on Creech Road. So what that, the philosophy behind that is you kind of assign each parcel to its nearest major road segment, and that being the idea that most of the traffic is going to go there. And so, we came up with about 500 acres of land that is either been planned but not yet built and approved, or acreage out there that is still largely vacant. We chose a 75-25. I wanna say that that was reflective maybe in a previous council desire of, in the vision statements about single-family versus townhome development. I might be making that up, but anyways, we decided that a 75% breakdown of single-family detached versus 25% townhomes was probably ballpark of what we would expect in a corridor like this. So we assigned 375 acres to single-family detached and 125 acres to townhomes. We did have some recent single-family approvals, such as Ashton Forest and the Creech Road subdivision being done by Habitat further up, to kind of give us an idea of what single-family density is coming in at for this area, and that's currently at about 2.6 units per acre. Townhomes, the only thing we really had to go by here is this proposal, which is that the max recommended within the comp plan of five units per acre. So from there, we just took the trips that are generated per dwelling unit to get an idea of what total new trips might be in the long-range future when everything's built out. We came out with about under, just under 14,000 additional trips per day. As we've noted before, a two-lane road with turn lanes dedicated where they need to be, which is what this roadway would be called for in our transportation plan, you're looking comfortably at about 1,800 for a max, so you're in the ballpark. Again, this isn't traffic engineering. One, we're not traffic engineers, and even a traffic engineer would tell you that it's kind of, to a degree, somewhat fuzzy engineering, but take this for what it's worth. We at least felt like we weren't out of the ballpark with what the comp plan calls for in terms of development along Creech Road. And I would just take this opportunity to say that when we did do the comp plan, there was a high-level look done by the consulting firm to kind of try to make sure that our land use recommendations weren't overtaxing the proposed road system, and in some cases, we did make some changes based on that. Looking specifically at the future land use map, we do have this area coded as medium density. Medium density is defined at 2.5 to 5 units per acre, and this proposal does come in at the max, 5 units per acre. I believe before, it was slightly higher, so there would have needed to have been a comp plan amendment to accommodate that request at the time, but this one has brought the request to be in compliance with this recommendation. So based on that, town offers that the requested rezoning for 64 dwelling units and an overall build-out at five units an acre is consistent with the map. In addition, we offered that the request is reasonable and that you could argue that it advances some of the plan's guiding principles for living spaces and keeping our character. Staff is supportive of a recommendation, finding this request consistent with the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan, so long as the town council is satisfied with the voluntary zoning conditions offered up by the applicant. So basically, what we're just saying there is, you know, the zoning conditions are between you and the developer, but otherwise, by what we've checked for other things, we do feel that it would be considered compliant. And with that, I can either pause, or I can go quickly into the subdivision.
I'll see quickly if we have a question or two on zoning, and then we'll go right into the other, okay? I'll start down here. Which is England? Okay, go over here. Okay.
Quick questions. On the previous slide, was there a typo on the request for the type of use? Is this DRC 11? This is MF12?
Yes, that is. Yep. So that should be, again, the MF1C227.
Okay. Another question was the density question. I'll have another with the development, but with the land use plan, where it's medium density, 2.5 to 5, is MF1, is that 6? And residential cluster, I think, is 6, too? So which would take precedence in this zoning?
So the MF1 zoning by itself would allow a higher, I think actually you can get that up to about eight or nine units per acre, but because they are conditioning this request, the cap would then be at 5 per their condition.
So the condition is set with the 5 density?
Right.
Okay. Thank you. That's the only question left. Thank you. No questions?
Vance, okay. Okay. So council is all finished here. See, Mr. Baggett, I'm trying to recall, do I have other witnesses to testify on the zoning, or can he just go ahead and move right into the...
He can go right into it.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Trezenberg, yeah?
Sure. And this may answer some additional questions as well. As noted previously, the overall acreage is just shy of 16.5 acres. They're proposing with this request to make permanent plans for 12.8 of those acres. In the first request that you saw, that acreage was only about 11 acres. So if you're wondering how the density came down, this is the change that brings that down, and I'll show you what they changed in terms of the plan. So it's still 64 dwelling units, proposal. In terms of tree cover, they have 12% minimum requirement, and so what they've done is set aside more acreage for what's essentially now tree cover area. This percentage went up dramatically as a percentage of the overall project, and you'll see that in the map that comes forward. But of the 12.8 acres that it would be committed under this plan, about 28% of it is committed as tree cover. Perimeter buffers are shown there in the street buffer, which is a distance separation. Where they're gonna do the enhanced landscaping is 20 feet, and street trees, of course, are provided along all public streets as required. In terms of the open space, which is a combination of either recreational open space or environmentally sensitive areas, they have a 10% minimum requirement. They've come in at 10.36% for those specific designations. What you do see, though, is that there is additional tree save area, which does not, again, we talked earlier in the previous session about how those two sometimes compete, but essentially what you're seeing is an additional 2.85 acres exclusively devoted to tree canopy preservation. In terms of parks, we're going with a recommended fee in lieu from the Parks Department for a fee in lieu of Parkland dedication, so that would be applied at building permits. The inspections Department and Fire Department have reviewed the plans and approved. As you can see here, the site does not contain any FEMA floodways or flood zones, but there are blue-lined streams that cross the property here and here. So the development proposal that you're seeing focuses on this acreage here, and the preservation areas are focused here, backing up to School Acres. The site would be subject to stormwater quality regulations for nitrogen as well as stormwater quantity for our typical 1, 10, and 25-year storms. They do have a wet retention pond shown to treat a portion of the nitrogen, but they still will be required to pay an offset to mitigation bank. Water and sewer, sewer traverses the site already, and water is along the front of the property in Creech Road. And so again, we get back here to roads and sidewalks. We talked about the 350 feet of frontage on Creech. The ultimate section is a three-lane facility, so a center-turn lane and still two through lanes in each direction, along with bike lanes, curb, gutter, and sidewalk on both sides. So they will need to dedicate seven more feet of additional right-of-way to accommodate that, and add approximately 11.5 feet of pavement to Creech Road. This is being coordinated with the approved construction plans for Ashton Forest, so everything ties together. Let's see. Bosch Drive, which is the main entrance coming into the subdivision, will be built to the edge of that first riparian buffer. They would be then required to pay a fee in lieu for their half of the crossing of that So here is the site plan superimposed on the aerial photography. So again, oops, and I hit the wrong button. There we go. So that first riparian buffer comes right up through here, so they would build the road up to the edge of the buffer and then pay that fee in lieu for half of the crossing. This is the 3.66 acres that would be reserved for possible sale, perhaps eventually to the property owner to the south if they were to ever come in with a development proposal. That would be the easiest way to service this pocket. That second riparian buffer comes right through here, so we know that's not going to be disturbed, and there's just a sliver of land right here that would not be developable for anything. So essentially, what you have is all of the dark gray is preserved tree canopy, and then even if this were sold here, you'd end up with preserved tree canopy in this area as well. This kind of shows the adjacent road network for Ashton Forest and a possible, how the road network might work on the property to the south, to promote some connectivity but nothing direct, to promote cut-through traffic. Here's a closer look, and again, here I shaded in blue on the future tract of what would end up being preserved in that case. So what you really end up with is a minimum 120-foot setback from the adjacent subdivision, and most of that's gonna be actually 200 feet or more. I didn't measure this up here, but I would guess that's at least 500 to 600 feet in this area. Parking for townhomes, we do have that required parking for guests, so 16 spaces. They provided 16 with one additional handicap space. The lighting meets the requirements for the UDO, as well as our staff recommendations for the color temperature and what they call the bug rating, the backlight, the uplight, and the glare. We try to keep those down, but the street lighting would be reviewed at construction drawing time. So when we get to the plan conformity, the 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan identifies Creech Road as a two-lane divided. With proposed improvements along the frontage, this project as proposed could be found in conformity with that plan. Review of parks, recreation, open space, and greenways did not reveal a plan recommendation specifically on this site. However, we did note that there is a greenway side path corridor mapped through Ashton Forest to the north, but then is mapped to follow Curtis and Longview Street. So there's one nearby, but it doesn't go through this property. So currently, with the fee in lieu of Parkland dedication, this project as proposed can be found to be in conformity with that plan. And finally, after sufficient review and plan revisions, we do find that the project as now proposed conforms to the regulations of the UDO. as now proposed conforms to the regulations of the U D O so long as the project's specific conditions are met. Prior to receipt of approved plans, the fees need to be paid to the engineering department. Prior to plat, we need a voluntary annexation petition and documents establishing an H O A. Prior to the first building permit, Raleigh's water and sewer fees need to be paid and the stormwater fees also have to be paid to the stormwater mitigation bank. And finally, prior to the issuance of the building permit, that fee in lieu of parkland has to be paid. And then our catchall that if any other road requirement comes from N C D O T, that we're made aware of that and they're required to execute those improvements as well. The Planning Commission reviewed this at their August 17th meeting. By three to one vote, the Planning Commission did confirm the staff findings regarding conformity with adopted town plans and policies and further accepted on that same vote line that staff statements regarding consistency with the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan. They adopted them as their own and recommended approval to the council. So again, we do have motions for you on pages 32 and 34 of your packet. All the options are presented to you. We have highlighted the ones since from our perspective it is in compliance, but again, as noted, the zoning is up to you based on your comfort level with the with the conditions and your agreement whether or not it actually does conform. So with that, I'm finished and I do know that the applicant is here and one of the property owners at least is here as well.
Okay, and we'll plan to hear from them, but first of all, council, give you a chance to ask questions of Mr. Trezenberg, starting on my right down here with Mr. Vance if he has any.
Please. Yes, Mr. Trezenberg, based upon the last plan that was brought before us last year, this has, does this not have more preserved natural space?
It does.
More?
Yes.
Okay. And can you just briefly explain what's being done differently in proximity to Creech Road than what was done last time?
Sure. So as noted in their conditions in this area here, for these two building sets that are siding up to the road, they've made a commitment to three windows at least minimum in each of those side facades as well as adding a landscaped berm on both sides of the entrance to dress it up.
Good. No small questions?
Mr. Dellinger.
To confirm, the project to the north is approved and it's not going to have a zoning change. It's going to be developed as an R 12, is that correct?
Yes. Years and years ago, there was a, it wasn't called Ashton Forest at the time, the name's escaping me at the moment, but they came forward with a rezoning petition and got it rezoned to R 9 from R 40. That project never went anywhere, but the zoning remained. So that's how that project came forward and whenever the zoning's in place, then it just goes to Planning Commission. So that's how that one happened.
There hasn't been any discussion or application for an increase in density or rezoning for the property to the north?
Not at this time.
And the one to the south, there's nothing planned, nothing been submitted for that?
Nope.
Is the idea, I guess I'll ask the applicant. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes, you touched on Mr. Vance's question. They noted that the previous application had 1.39 acres of open space and this has the 4.4, which is on this particular picture, the upper left hand corner, which last time they didn't know what they were going to do, but because the buffer down here, as you clearly shown here, the 120 at a minimum, a lot of that's over 200 foot if anything would be to be built back there. And that small area is three acres?
If I go back to 3.66.
3.66 acres. But that's the entire, that includes the buffer, so the buildable area is about half that.
Right.
Shaking his head. Okay, thank you. I thought, okay, thank you.
Matthews, okay? Anybody else, okay? Okay, thank you, Mr. Trezenberg. Supposing, does the applicant wish to be heard?
My name's Jay Callen. I'm Dan Ryan Builder for the applicant. Do I, do I need to state any items for my expertise? I'm not an engineer, I'm not a stormwater engineer, traffic engineer, so I won't comment on any, anything that I'm not supposed to, but I did want to clarify, yes, to council member Singleton's comments about 2.3 acres, I believe, inside the, inside the riparian buffers. I also wanted to know on the side.
You can put your mask down. I'm going to hear you better.
Sorry about that.
That's all.
On the side of the units, the window condition there, it's, the intent is not that it's, it's not just facing Creech Road, it'll be facing all roadways. And then I can further share that the intent is that all of the in units will have at least three windows on the side and in many cases there will be more, but there's, the minimum configuration is three. And then to Jeff's point as well, I know at Planning Commission that we had a question on this, on the 16 square foot rear patio, our standard is an 80 square foot, eight by 10. There are a lot of retaining walls on the site. I don't have a completed finalized grading plan, but we do believe there's going to be a couple lots in there that are going to get a little tight. And so that's the expectation is that we'll at least have, you know, stoop on the back room, but there might be one or two units in there that could not actually fit that full 80 foot patio. And I don't want to commit to something that I can't follow through on and I, the plans aren't at a level of design yet, but I know exactly the size of those patios that they're going to be. But again, there is, the property owners are here, both property owners are here, so if you have any questions for them and then if you have any further questions for me, I'm happy to answer them best I can.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I'll see if there are any questions from here. Mr. Matthews, Mr. Singleton, anything else?
Oh, no, no, sir.
I'm sorry. No, no. Mr. Dellinger.
With, with the reserved area on the back southwest part of the property, is the intention to sell that to another developer to develop a southern lot? Is that the?
Yes, yes, or there were also some members of the neighboring subdivision that, that some of their properties back up to that area that expressed interest in purchasing it to extend their property lines back in effect to protect themselves or their homes. So that was one option. There's also the, the road extension, that parcel to the south of us is, has got some physical constraints, so an area like this could be helpful for them for providing connectivity. But yeah, it was just to leave some options for that parcel if it were ever to be developed or a private party wanted to buy it in the future.
I guess this question is for Mr. Trezenberg on, since this is sort of like the first of several puzzle pieces, it looks like. So the plan would be to eventually extend, there'd be a connectivity with the road to the south there into the, that neighborhood and go across all the way to Creech or to?
So, yeah, so what we wanted to show here was, you know, currently there's, this, this road dead ends right now. It's just a stub. I don't even know that it has a name.
Right.
Into Longview, but, and again, not to promote cut through traffic. You know, I think what we would propose is that this actually get cul-de-sac, so that the connectivity has to turn and go through. So it's done in a way then that doesn't encourage the cut through traffic, but gives people options to get in and out. I think there's also probably some question at that point too as well from N C D O T about just how many, how many street driveway connections they're going to be willing to accept in a certain amount of distance, so.
Because base, I guess you've already, would project one for Ashton Forest to the north to have a connectivity on the Creech Road. So whoever comes into this parcel in the south, we would be telling them, you're not going to get a connection on the Creech Road?
Well, the idea, so a lot of it has to do with timing. So if this project were to be approved and built, then it's got another way of access. If this project were not built and that property would come in, they would have to get, potentially, they would have to get some kind of access on the Creech. They do have access to the stub street in the back, so, but if you'd want to serve that whole piece of property just off of that one connection, I don't know that that's a great idea either.
That's all for now.
Mr. Vance?
Yes, at your, at your neighborhood meeting that was held back in February, were you able to adequately answer the questions that were presented before you by the public?
I believe so.
You believe so?
To the best of my ability, I answered every question. I believe the biggest questions that we had was related to price of the homes. And again, there's, it's a broad range, market factor determining all that, but a lot of the questions were concerning whether or not traffic would cut through into their existing neighborhood. We explained that we have no direct tie into that. A lot, a lot of the questions were concerning traffic impacts through, drive through traffic into their neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have as mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I believe, do the owners or the owner wish to be heard at this time?
Yes, my name is John Bosch. I have been owning the property, the 15 plus acres, the larger part of the development land for, since about 1997. So it's been a long time and I actually had hoped that we would get something as I'm seeing being developed and considered now. I tried for a number of years to sell the property and because of the very difficult nature of it, as you can see, as I certainly as a layman, see if they're with the, with the gullies and the streams and the, the non-access to the back, all of these things were pretty much overwhelming to any, any developer until this one came along and, and took the lead. So I, I do appreciate their work and, and the, and the staff here of the complexity and professionalism showed, so thank you.
Question for the owner? None. Thank you, Mr. Bosch. Sure enough, okay. Are there other persons here who wish to testify or was anybody else who was sworn that would testify at this time? Okay, if you're a member of the public and you have an interest in this, if you will come to the podium and state your name and address. Good afternoon.
I'm C. Chappelle, owner of Chappelle's Funeral Home. We have four acres there and this town, which I hope becomes city one day, I'm looking forward for the growth. And as the brother said just in front of me about so much difficulties, modernization will really help and I would like to see this city grow. And all that we can do, and we were willing to take a part of ours to let go, to help bring in newness in our environment.
Thanks, sir. Okay. Anyone else deserves to?
My name is Kay Woodall and I live on Longview Street and it backs up to this piece of property that they're wanting to develop. I'm very opposed to it. I know Mr. Dan wants to build it. We've talked to him several times, but I look at my backyard and I see the trees back I hear the owls back there. I see the deer back there. And I walk that creek back there. So I'm very opposed to it. I don't like it, not a bit. And I don't think any of the neighbors on Longview Street are going to like it because we have enough traffic on our street that comes from Curtis Drive all the way through. And if they open that street, that little cul-de-sac that they want to open up and if they open the Curtis Drive Street from the Ashton Park, there'll be more traffic in our neighborhood. And we have enough traffic in our neighborhood from the school and everything else. So I'm very opposed to it.
Thank you, Ms. Woodall. Anyone else care to speak? Okay. I'll recognize this gentleman.
Good evening. I'm David Watson, 102 Arlene Street. This doesn't fit. M F does not fit. Residential fits. R 9 or R 12. Most of your family does not fit on Creech Road. Thank you.
Was there anyone else who cared to offer testimony at this time?
Yes, sir. How's everybody? Yeah, my name is Rodney Stradon. I live on Longview and, you know, it connects to my back property, which I've been living there a long time, so the trees and everything, the Creech should stay there. What you're going to have, you're going to have traffic coming through a cul-de-sac from there, okay? The security is a, is a problem. All right? If you have traffic coming through there, if you extend Curtis Drive or extend Powell, you're going to have a cul-de-sac, okay? And why is this property being built? Nobody said anything about it. Why is this property being built? No one says anything about it. So the cul-de-sac, there's streets coming through, I live on Longview, there's a security problem, folks. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Joanda Chappelle and to the mayor and the council members, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity. I would like to welcome places for people to live. I'd like to welcome, I know that sometimes people don't really want things to happen, but growth must go on. We cannot stay stagnant where we are and we have to provide places for people to live. Security, we've got good policemen in Ghana. We own and operate Chappelle's Funeral Home. We've not had a single break in. We've not had any issues, but I want to say that we do need growth. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, come forward, please.
My name is Tim Holton, 411 Longview Street in Garner. Good evening, mayor, council, staff, community members. Character 24 times. No less than 24 times the word character appears in the citizen-inspired comprehensive planning document known as the Garner Forward Plan, completed just a couple of years ago, as you know, in 2018. As that plan itself states, quote, "A big reason that so much care and effort were dedicated to working with the public and team members was that the input from all of these efforts would lead to the overarching goals and objectives." Character 24 times. This word character is so important to the citizens of Garner that it is placed as the leading and overarching guiding principle, which states, again, I quote, "Building on and conserving the existing character of Garner." This process is tough. We hear it is tough for the real estate development community. Well, it's really tough for the Well, it's really tough for the community, community. For John and Jane Q. Public, who love Garner with its room to breathe living, this process is incredibly challenging. As most of you know by now, I am a transplant to this beautiful place. Born in Oklahoma, raised in Wisconsin, and as an adult, lived all over the country. My wife and I have been citizens now for a couple of years. So I am a transplant to Garner, to the triangle, just like most of the sixty-five to a hundred people, depending who you talk to, who are moving to this region every day from all over the country and who are comparing and contrasting Garner along with the other towns in the region. So I am a transplant. And as you know, and you can probably tell, I feel more than a little bit uncomfortable coming up here. And there are a number of reasons for it. One thing, what I have to say might sound foolish. I don't know. I was warned by my neighbors from the start that I, that we would be wasting our breath. Still, I don't want to disappoint them. There is also the fact that I'm not from these parts. I can't claim to have lived here for decades and decades, like so many of my neighbors. In the back of my mind, I imagine some people in this room are thinking, who does this son of a gun think he is telling us what he thinks? I can understand why some might think or feel that way. But I have come to learn over the past couple of years, as a Garner citizen, that I am actually very much of the same heart and mind as my neighbors and most of the John and Jane Q. Public who I speak with. I have come to learn that these decades-long residents have a similar gut-level heartfelt love and desire to see that we build on and conserve the existing character of Garner. Appearance, brand, design, quality, these other four words appear no less than one hundred and six times in that ninety-some-page Garner Forward Plan. Character, appearance, brand, design, quality, these words are shouting from the pages because these are the issues that are important to the citizens of this town. Now, from my interactions with some of you and the staff, many of it through the UDO project and elsewhere, I have come to know you as decent human beings. You are. I'll take Mr. Jeff Preisenberg over there. Not only is he, his brain an encyclopedia of the technical details in the UDO, he may be one of the nicest people to ever walk the face of God's green earth. So thank you for being decent human beings. I mean that. And still, decent human beings come to this with different motivations and concerns and with very different lasting impacts that permanently affect the quality of our future lives here on God's green earth. Remember, we've got folks on the front and the backside of this property who have spent decades here never imagining a project with this kind of density on that R40 land. I would hazard that even Mr. Bosch, who purchased the land nearly a quarter century ago, would have ever dreamt such a sixty-four-unit project on this R40 land when he purchased it. We can do better. We've got to get this right and address the concerns of the neighbors and citizens. Now, do you know how many times the word "character" was discussed tonight? One time. Unfortunately, this word, the word that drives the comprehensive plan's leading and overarching principle, gets virtually no developer discussion, whether it's here before council, before the planning commission, or with the neighbors at the neighborhood meeting. For developers to propose projects and to fail to provide a clear and comprehensive discussion of this leading principle is to fail to abide by the overarching heart and soul and spirit of the citizen-inspired Garner Forward Plan.
Mr. Holton, I don't want to be rude, but I will have to ask you to sort of wrap it up. You're using your time.
I'm, I'm here on behalf of a few other folks, so.
Okay.
Let's see. I want to respect your time, so.
Thank you.
If you'll bear with me, I'm going to cut to like the last few paragraphs, okay? So a couple of weeks ago, I watched the proceedings for the thirteen-hundred-unit Assemblage Project on 401 near 1010 Road, a big project. The density of that two-hundred-seventy-seven-acre project with a massive five-hundred-unit apartment complex, four-hundred-and-fifty-five townhomes, and three-hundred-plus homes is actually lower in density than the density they are proposing here for Kennedy Ridge, and both of which sit on forty, R40 land. Kennedy Bridge is discussed, five units per acre. The massive Assemblage Project is four-point-seven-six units per acre, while including a large pool, lifestyle center, cabana, play lawn, outdoor gathering space, and trails. Many of you responded positively to Mr. Roberts, who was presenting that project, on how he worked closely with the neighbors of Assemblage to address their concerns, including the creation of a list of some nine additional conditions. Many of you saying, this is the way it's supposed to be. I agree. And we want, and wanted, to be afforded the same. I, we would like some additional conditions of our own. And we do not believe, based on comments from the developer during both neighborhood meetings, that they pose a severe or undue burden. Namely, first, that these original sixty-four units will be the end of it. The area that sits in a sort of limbo state there in the bottom corner will all be permanently designated as usable recreation and open space, negating their need for a potential road or potential future development in those woods. And since the development provides no built amenities, usable recreation and open space such as this would be a wonderful natural green space amenity, which, by the way, would be consistent with another key principle in the Garner Forward Plan for recreation opportunities and green spaces. It would also serve as a natural buffer between two very different kinds of neighborhoods, a mature mid-century neighborhood and this new, much denser style of living. And while this doesn't seem to mean that much at these meetings, it will permit habitat to remain for the deer and the owls and the other wonders of nature that visit us from those woods. And for the kids in our neighborhood who come down to play in those woods. Maybe it could even be designated and dedicated as Town of Garner Parkland. I don't know. But sixty-four units to be the end of it. Enough is enough. On a different note, there are many possible architectural options to be placed on the sixty-four concrete foundations. Despite the time-lapse waiver, we see no updates on what the project will look like and what it intends to place on those labs. And we think it's appropriate that the architecture, craftsmanship, and materials be shared and discussed fully to determine that they successfully satisfy the leading principle of character.
Mr. Holton.
This is the last paragraph.
Please.
And I am done.
You've, you've, you've been with us over ten minutes, okay?
Maybe I am foolish. I hope my neighbors were wrong about wasted breath. But I think there is still a chance to work this out, to do better, to get this right for a lot of decent people. But without these few citizen-inspired conditions, we ask that you either delay a decision until the list of conditions is created or deny the project as inconsistent with the overarching requirement of the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan, that of building on and conserving the existing character of Garner. Thank you.
Okay, I'm supposing that is the last speaker. Mr. Holton indicated that perhaps he was expressing the views of some of, some of the other neighbors. And on occasion, we certainly have one person speak for others. So unless there's someone else who wants to speak. I'm going to close the public hearing. And council, I am asking you to consider a motion, first of all, I believe, on the rezoning portion of the presentation, and then we will move to the other segment. So is there a motion on the rezoning request?
Can I ask Mr. Preisenberg a clarification question? Because it got brought up by, by a couple of folks, Ms. Woodall, Mr. Stratten. There's no plans on, on this proposed subdivision to connect to either Longview or Curtis Drive.
Yeah.
Ashton Forest, that doesn't connect to Curtis Drive, does it?
No.
So there's, the cul-de-sac, I bet confused everything. There's no plans to connect anything to Longview or Curtis Drive in this plan, or Ashton Forest?
Not with this plan, no.
Okay. I just want to make sure that, that was clarified, so everyone understood that there's no plans to connect anything to Longview Drive.
I have a question, no clarification. My, my big concern with the project is the connectivity. And while this plan doesn't have that plan for that road extension, it clearly has a stubout for connection to the south. My concern is if you, you need, whatever properties to the south needs to connect either to the west or to Creech Road, but not both. There's no, if you can cut through, there are two schools, there's traffic, people coming down Creech Road. They're going to be like, oh, Bosch Drive, I'm going to turn down here and I'm going to cut through and go to Longwood. This project as presented is the impetus for cut-through traffic. Unless, and, and how you, I mean, I guess, and how you mitigate that is the other question. And it could be mitigated by getting rid of that southern stub and saying, well, we're not going to allow, and then now the developer comes in with the southern property would have to make a decision on how they wanted to develop. I'm sure there'd be opposition to a cut-through road going all the way through. I guess my other question for the developer is, and I guess it's his discretion to answer the question or not, but I think it, it's important, is, is the project viable without the southwest portion being sold?
So again, our, our plan is not to sell it, the plan is to leave it as undeveloped area or reserved area in the future. If that changed, we would have to come back through and submit a subdivision plan. The intention of leaving it there is to provide flexibility for either the town, adjacent developers, property owners to the west, whoever it may be. And, and then to your other point about the connectivity, the site plan follows the, the UDO requirements for connectivity and block standards and all those sort of things. So again, the, the, the design is driven by the code. And then again, the, the selling of the property is not factored in our financial model at all. But it, it is a requirement, I believe, of providing this connectivity. If, if that southern parcel, and again, Jeff, Jeff would have to speak to this, but if that southern parcel were developed as a cul-de-sac, I don't know what your cul-de-sac length maximum is, but they would more than likely be required to have multiple connection points to it as well. There, I believe it's called Powell Road, there's a dedicated right-of-way that is intersecting that parcel to the south. So there will be a road there. How and when and, and if it connects to this property is, is for another development. And, and if you want to alleviate cut-through traffic, or like Jeff mentioned earlier, ultimately have access out on Creech Road and not force traffic to go through the Longview subdivision, then, then you want to have connectivity to this subdivision in the future, which is, again, the reason why we're trying to retain that, that, the flexibility within that two-and-a-half-acre parcel that's left over.
Okay, any other council have a question while we're questioning? I'm ready for a motion.
Just make a, did we pull that slide up with this cul-de-sac we keep talking about? I seen it earlier. I'm just trying to refresh my mind here and see where we're at with this thing. Make sure I'm understanding properly.
So, let me, let me preface this by saying, I wanted to try to give you all some context of what the larger picture could look like in the future. But by no means, as Mr. Colvin said, you know, that's another development decision for another time. So, again, people have asked about where these roads might go in the future. This is a very preliminary look at what it could look like in a way that doesn't promote cut-through traffic, but would show some connectivity. Again, connectivity is important. I can't stress that enough. Without it, you end up with these five-mile-long blocks, like Aversboro, Timber to Fifty to Buffalo. And you get four intersections that are heavily overloaded, and Creech and Garner is already a bad intersection. So, again, I try not to bring those too locally for you because the more locally you bring it, the more, I guess, impassioned folks are about it, rightfully so. But we have to keep these larger goals in mind. So again, just to preface, this is just a schematic of what it could look like in a way such you can get an idea of how it might work.
So if I'm looking at this correctly, that 3.66 acres reserved by owner, that's the ones, as I'm looking at this map now, that butt up to those neighborhoods we've been talking about. And is there a reason we're trying to hold on to that 3.66 acre since that seems to be the stumbling block here? Or would you like to come to some resolution and put this issue behind us? It'd be amenable to the neighbors and nobody would be building in their backyard. Just asking.
Yeah. Again, I, I believe what will happen is if you dedicate that entire area, you're going to effectively eliminate the development potential of the parcel to the south of it. And the potential, again, it's not our near-term intent to sell that to anyone. But in the event that we did, then that would, could potentially greatly harm that parcel. And then you've got a, a dead spot in the middle of your town for a long time.
So you're telling me that parcel could be built on and developed? Am I hearing you correctly?
In conjunction with the, the parcel to the south is my expectation for it.
I mean, this 3.66 right now, it's reserved by owner, so that can be developed?
We would have to submit a new site plan. I'm not sure of the entire process. I believe that would have to come back in front of you for it to get approved. So in order for that 3.66-acre parcel or 3.68 parcel to be developed, it would have to come back in front of council. It would have to meet all the town codes and standards. There would be a public hearing associated with it. You, you would have full authority to rule on it, on, on, as the plan was presented.
And then we'd be going through this again?
On that 3.66.
That's what I'm hearing you say.
Yes, sir.
I'm trying to alleviate a problem now and one for later on. So I'm just offering this up and. But the 3.66, only 2.3 is available. And with setbacks, you're only talking with townhomes, you've got five an acre. You couldn't even build ten town, ten townhomes right there. You've got to think, remember the big buffer. Plus, the area to the south is under R12. So if someone's going to do something, they're going to ask to rezonate. So if it doesn't get rezoned, then you don't have a stubout. You don't have any trouble when you don't develop that. Takes care to issue.
Question is, I mean, two questions. I'll ask them at the same time. How would converting that 3.66 all to dedicated open space or protected tree coverage negatively impact that southern parcel? My other question is, if somebody came in and wanted to develop that southern parcel, which is all trees, wouldn't they go in and buy that 3.66 so that they could get a significant portion of their tree coverage covered and then just clear-cut the rest of it?
I, I, again, I can't speak to how somebody would develop it or how. I, I, again, I can't speak to how somebody would develop it or how they would use it. I can speak to how I look at properties, and if, if I were, if I were the owner of the parcel to the south of me, I would be looking for any wiggle room I had, any additional acreage I could add to either create connection points that are going to be required by the code, as you said, speak, call, grab tree coverage area. If we dedicate that as tree coverage area today, then that would eliminate the potential for that to be used for a future subdivision. Again, the, the near and medium-term use of this land is going to be undeveloped raw land that will, in all likelihood, be passed to the HOA and maintained as, as community property. But again, the intention of, of leaving it as a reserve by owner is to allow flexibility in the future.
Thanks, sir.
I like Mr. Matthews' suggestion of going ahead and dedicating a significant swath of that to open space and 200, 300 feet buffer there to the neighboring neighborhood. I'm a little confused, is so much concern with the fut, the development of this southern property. If I were to develop, I'd be worried about getting my project through. That's just me.
Okay. Anything from you, Miss Behringer? Okay, round this way. Well, counsel, we've had considerable discussion on this matter, and I understand the different passions and views on this, but we're called upon to, to make some decision on this matter. And the sequence of order is, is a motion, if you're so inclined. So again, I will call on counsel to consider a motion on the first element, which is the rezoning, which would have to pass before we can do the other.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we find CUDZ 2002 to Kennedy Ridge, find a system with the comprehensive plan and approve.
Motion has been properly made. Is there a second? Okay, second by Ms. Behringer. All right, before we vote, any, any other, hopefully brief discussion or questions?
One comment, and it's a good discussion period after the motion and the second. I do, I'm glad that the development to the north has, will go forward without a rezoning. There is a precedent being set on the density here in this entire area for more multifamily one zoning and higher density. Couple that with what looks like a preliminary traffic flow that would create cut-throughs, I think that is very problematic. Again, you've got schools, you've got, I see it as a, as a big problem to do this rezoning at this time.
Okay. Any other comments, observations?
Mr. Mayor, the project itself, I have no problems with, excuse me, but again, my concern is that rear buffer down there. And so the project itself, I have no concern with, I think it'd be fine, but I'm concerned about the homeowners that back up to it with this piece of property here that we're not sure is going to happen, what's going to happen with it, and we could be revisiting it again a year from now. So that's, my concern is that rear buffer there with the homeowners adjoining it. Thank you.
All right. I think, I think at this point, we're, we're finished. I tell you, I think we have a motion before, so we have to consider. Thank you. Okay, counsel, I think everybody's had a chance to speak or a question that you wanted to, is that correct, everybody here? So, all those in favor of the motion that was just articulated by Councilmember Vance, please say aye.
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 All those opposed to the motion articulated, excuse me, articulated by Councilmember Vance, please say no.
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 There is not a vote. Does that count as an affirmative vote?
No.
Excuse me. Okay.
I don't know, you were listening that close, Mayor.
Didn't hear. Okay, the motion is defeated by a three to two vote. So the rezoning is not approved. At this point, Mr. Baggett, I guess...
Then there has been a motion made to set forth like that, correct, Mr. Attorney?
To deny it.
Sir?
To deny it?
To deny it?
Yes.
Your motion has to be made?
Yes.
To, to deny?
With a finding.
Ready?
Go ahead, you worry about it.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council find rezoning requests inconsistent with the Garner Ford Plan for the following reasons. Concerns with connectivity, transportation, buffering, and therefore, I move the town council reject the recommendation of the planning commissioner and deny rezoning request, CUDZ 20-02.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Singleton and properly seconded by Mr. Matthews. I think we probably exhausted the conversation, but does any other council member care to make a point or question before we vote? Okay, you're now voting on a motion to deny the rezoning. So all those in favor of the motion that's properly before us, please vote aye.
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 All those who would vote against the motion, please vote no.
No.
Okay. The motion to deny is passed on a three to two vote. We don't have to have a majority on that, do we, Mr. Baggett? I mean...
No, that's fine, a majority of the quorum, you're, you're fine.
Yeah, okay, all right. So at this point, with a motion to deny, we do not, I don't believe, take up the other manor, is that right?
Correct.
The other manor dies in conjunction with the action taken on the rezoning, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, any other points of clarification that are needed at this time, Mr. Baggett?
I don't think so.
Okay. Okay, the motion is denied at this time, and so we will take up the next item on our agenda at this point. A new and old business item, and Mr. David Beck is the presenter in this case.
Really finish this. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Bringing to you this evening a recommendation to select a lender to finance the bulk of our VERT replacement program for fiscal year '21. If you'll recall, in the budget process, it was proposed to finance the majority of that, a little over $927,000 would be financed, about $160,000 would come from fund balance to, to buy the, the vehicles and equipment as part of the VERT replacement plan. So we crafted an RFP that went out to over 60 regional and local banks and lenders. We received a good response to that RFP, received 14 proposals, and presented you with a bid tab that summarizes all those proposals. The recommendation is that you select key government finance as the lender for this transaction. They proposed a rate of 1.093% over a four-year term, and we would end up with a total financing cost for this transaction of just over $952,778. So it's sort of two actions we would ask you to take. One would be to select key as the lender, and then there is a resolution approving the financing terms that goes along with that. I'll be glad to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. Counsel, any questions regarding the presentation and recommendation by our finance director? Hearing none.
Just a quick question. One, I'm glad we did this, I think it's a good, given the circumstances. The other, is there, is there any way to offset, I know it's not a high interest rate at all, is there any way to offset that small interest rate in investment somewhere with VERT? Because I know those, we would have been paying the full, full amount. Is there any way to offset that with those fund, other funds?
It'll be offset a little bit, but because we're going to have to set up an escrow account when we close the transaction, so the funds are going to sit in an account probably two to three months and draw some interest that'll be to our credit. Beyond that, you know, we have other funds invested, other town funds invested, and unfortunately, with the interest rates like they are, it's, it's kind of dwindling month to month, but, but we will recoup a little bit of that while it's sitting in that escrow account.
Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, okay. Anybody else? So I believe Mr. Beck has asked us to essentially consider two manners. One is selecting, uh, gee, excuse me, key government finance as the lending institution, so I'll entertain a motion on that recommendation.
Some moves?
Sec.
Properly seconded. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to select key government finance as a lending institution, please vote aye.
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 Any opposed, vote no, and it is carried unanimously. And then the second part of that is the approval of the actual terms itself under the resolution of 20, 2024-22. Is there a motion on that portion of the request?
Move, move to accept.
Okay.
Second.
Moved properly seconded by Councilmember Behringer. Any other, excuse me, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of that motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposition, no, it is so ordered. Thank you, Mr. Beck.
Thank you.
If you could work on this, looks like you've got some money to spend, or to borrow, I guess. Thanks, sir. Okay, counsel, we're moving on towards what would ordinarily be our nine o'clock recess, but I think we can wrap these things up probably unless we're anticipating any long discussions. So if you want to move on, then let's finish up the agenda. So committee reports are next, I'm not aware of any. None, okay.
I think Mr. Beck has something to say.
Yeah, I was going to wait till you came to me, and I, and I apologize, I did mean to ask for a closed session.
Discuss the potential matter of litigation. I discussed it with the town attorney before the meeting, but forgot to interject when you had the agenda approved, so if we could get that.
Okay.
And I, I don't expect it's going to be a, a really long one.
So how about if we hold that to the end and...
Yeah.
We could take a short recess and go into closed session then, okay?
Right, yeah.
All right. Um, any, anything else from you, Mr. Manager?
Um, I do have some reports.
Okay.
You have the Garner info, but we also have some matters that we just want to update you on, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Hodges to do that.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. Johnson could not be here tonight, so one of these I'm going to handle on his behalf. We're wrapping up the resurfacing contract for the year, and we had originally brought to you two crossings that the contractor for the resurfacing was going to perform for us, moving the Timber Drive crossing and adding the crossing at the YMCA on Aversboro. Council approved us to move forward with that, and the same vendor was doing it, so there was sort of an implication that we would just use the funding from the resurfacing project for it. However, when we got to the end of the resurfacing project, we realized there's about enough money left in the resurfacing project to handle two issues that Mr. Johnson thinks are pretty important, that are traditional resurfacing issues. So we wanted to bring toward, forward tonight, those two items, and then ask your consideration of us moving the funding for the two crossings to be street and sidewalk bond funds, which is how we've handled the previous crossings that we've added over the last few years. That's about $71,000 that we would add to the other street and sidewalk projects. And with the balance of $49,000, there are two projects that we could take care of that total about $45,000. One would be the next most critical street on the list, and that one is White Cap Lane, and that was one that Mr. Johnson had hoped to be able to get into this year's work. Another item is one that Mr. Singleton brought to our attention. There is a section of road, a section of Pool Drive on the eastern portion of Pool Drive where the, the asphalt is, is coming up pretty badly, and we believe that recently added bus service has caused some conditions that I think staff has known over the years that we had a year of paving that was not, maybe to town standards, and we didn't know until much after that. I think that work was done about 10 years ago, and we're now seeing some consequences of that. So because of the, the enhanced bus service, we think it would be great to get that street, that section of street in good condition, and then also address White Cap Lane. So, so the, the request of you tonight is consideration of using the remaining, the resurfacing dollars will cover these two issues, and then we would need to move the two crossings to street and sidewalk bond funds, or some other funds should you choose, but that's where the others were paid for.
Need a motion, or is that going to be on consent agenda for the future, or you need a motion?
Um, actually, I don't believe that's necessarily needed until we come back and do a final true-up of the street and sidewalk bond funds. I'm looking for Mr. Beck to...
Well, I think...
We'll bring a budget.
We're going to have to do a change order with the contractor.
Yes, but we'll have to bring that back on a future, yes, that will have to come back on another agenda.
Yeah, so that, that'll have to come back at another, another meeting date to add that work onto their contract. And, you know, it, it's because it is, we're still going to do the crossing, so we're not swapping out, you know, dollar for dollar, so we would need to bring that back.
So as was noted here, can that be put on a cons, future consent agenda?
It, it can, and if it can be ready in time, we might even ask your indulgence in doing it at the work session next week, just to be able to allow the contractor to move forward in a more timely manner. I know you don't often take those up, but if you're, if you're willing for us to have an action item on there, if we can prepare it in time, we will. If not, we'll have it for the following week's meeting. We're waiting for the, the final paperwork for the, from the contractor.
Everybody, we, we sometimes do a thumbs up, I guess, okay.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you to Mr. Johnson for bringing these items forward for us. We mentioned the Timber Drive crossing. We've updated council on the crossing late last week, but for the sake of folks that are watching from home, we did just want to take an opportunity to tell, remind you and tell the public that one of the projects you did authorize was moving the, the pedestrian crossing near Buckingham on Timber Drive to a position slightly west of the Greenway Crossing. Much of that construction work was completed by the end of last week. We decommissioned the crossing at Buckingham, as, as you and the public may know, we've had some challenges with, with dangerous crossings there, but because we have not finished the construction, we've taken some measures at the end of the week last week to try to make things as safe as possible until we can, can finish that work. That included bagging the pedestrian crossing signals so people would not rely on those to be able to cross the street in an unsafe place. We've affixed signage to the posts of those crossings to alert people to please cross either at the new crossing using extreme caution because it is not finished, or at a signalized crossing. We've installed signage at the crosswalk indicating the same messaging. Public Works removed vegetation that was in the median of timber that was blocking the sightline of view to the new crossing. They'll be coming back with some more trimming. And then our communication staff has been pushing messaging out on Nextdoor for all of the neighborhoods that we knew would likely be using that crossing, and also pushing messaging out on all of our social media outlets and channels that has been also picked up by police, parks, and parks and recreation. That messaging also includes letting citizens know that the new sidewalks on the south side of Timber are complete, and that will alleviate the need for many people to have to cross Timber to be able to make a loop back around towards the parks. So we just wanted to make sure that council got the, the word about those improvements and help us spread that word, and also for anyone watching to know what was going on with that crossing. We hope that all that work will be completed by the end of next week.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hodges. And yeah, I have noticed, I think it's on Nextdoor, one of the, the online services, that, that information, I think there was a picture of the... a picture of the, uh, of the, uh, the sign there, that's covered over for right now, anyway, yeah. So, hopefully, everybody's very aware of that, and as you say, the sidewalk on the, the, on the park, what I call the park side, it is available for use, and so people, unless they just need to cross the street, they can certainly use that sidewalk, thank you.
Absolutely can.
Okay.
And we had one more item tonight, just wanted to update council that the Connect Conference that the town co-produces with the Chamber of Commerce has been scheduled. Um, it is a virtual format this year, um, and, um, the, the format will be having four consecutive Thursday mornings for an hour and 15 minutes, some experience that Mr. Stallings and other had, others have had in participating in day-long virtual conferences. Um, we took his suggestion, and I think everyone, um, is glad now that we've worked out four consecutive Thursdays beginning October 22nd going through November 12th. We'll send you information about it, but wanted to let you know that it's gonna be 10:00 a.m. to 11:15 in the morning, those four consecutive days. We're gonna have one day that's sort of TED Talk-style presentations by five presenters, exciting lineup of folks there. We're gonna have a public sector panel that includes the town's economic development staff, Wake Economic Development, Triangle J, Council of Governments, and other partners. We're gonna have the Amazon facilities manager speak at one of the, those days, and then the last day is gonna be a development panel, that's gonna be a chance for the town and the chamber to provide an update on economic development projects, and then a panel discussion that will include, um, uh, four developers that are doing, uh, commercial, residential, um, industrial, and large residential projects in Garner. So, I think that, that the chamber staff and, and the town staff have worked to put together what I think is a really good, uh, uh, agenda for a conference, and we'll be sharing that with you. If you get the updates from the chamber yourself, you'll notice a registration button. If you're going to register for the conference, please let Ms. Gibson know that you'd like to register. We do have registrations included in our sponsorship of the event, and so we will process those through the clerk's office, so that we don't generate a, a separate registration at the council, I mean, at the chamber.
What are the dates, John?
October 22, 29, November 5, and November 12. And if you do get chamber emails, I think you may have received one yesterday that had a sneak pre, preview, preview of the website, uh, which I think is garnerconnect.com, but I'm not sure if that's exactly it, and then it has those dates included as well. So, thank you to chamber staff and to town staff for all their work on reacting to the current situation, putting together what I think is gonna be a good event for both organizations.
I was wondering if they were gonna try to do the Connect Conference, that's something that's become almost an institution in our town now, so I'm glad to know that it's gonna be done in this fashion, uh, necessitated by the circumstance we find ourselves in, I'm sure. So, okay, uh, was that it for you, Mr. Manager? Okay, always give Mr. Baggett an opportunity, got a place on him for the attorney.
Well, it, it occurs to me, this is my last meeting with y'all, I think.
Oh, no.
I think your new attorney, uh, will be on board the first week in October.
That's true.
And you won't have a meeting that I will be at before then.
Good, always invite you to the work session, I guess.
Well, I'd love to come. But it, it's been an honor to work with y'all, and, and Mayor, you've been wonderful, and all of you are, uh, the epitome of public service. This is a great town. When the town attorney position was advertised, several people I knew who were interested called me and asked about the town, and I said, "You could not ask for a better place to live and work than for the town of Garner." It, it is just wonderful, and I really mean that. Rodney, and Matt, and John, and all the staff, plus all of you, are, are just the best. So, it's been a pleasure, and thank you for the opportunity.
Well, thank you, sir, for those kind words, and I was gonna say, uh, I guess if I'd have had it in my mind that, uh, tonight was gonna be your last appearance, I'd have tried to write a speech for you too, but, uh...
He do, he do, he do.
Yeah, 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 I could have found a quote or two that would have fit you, I think.
So, now you got, now you have to come back next week.
Mr. Mayor...
In the next little bit, uh, I think we'll probably try to, try to do something, you know...
Yeah, that's not necessary. It's like, it's like a, it's like a brief romance, you know? It was nice, but you don't have to go on and on about it.
Mr. Mayor, I don't think I've seen Mr. Baggett this happy since his tenure.
Move off a slow, and you said you was gonna need me only for about four or five months, he's stuck around for longer than that, so... Uh, Mr. Baggett, uh, yeah, I'm sure I speak for county, they can speak for themselves, but as a new mayor, uh, you know, you, you've been the first attorney, really, that I've worked with as mayor, and it's certainly been a joy for me, and you've, uh, you've provided me good guidance and kept me on the path, so our new attorney will, uh, will have some challenges there to pick up and move on, I'm sure, but, um, the, the, the feeling is mutual in terms of just the way you've presented yourself, and, and stepped right in and assisted us, it's been, uh, it's just been tremendous, and if anybody wants to say a few words, that's fine, but, uh...
That's...
Okay, all right, all right.
Well, I just, I can't imagine, uh, it, it was sad to, um, for Bill to resign when he did, but I cannot imagine someone who could have filled that position for, and served us better and hit the ground running. We, you've done a lot for us, you've saved us a lot of headaches, you've given us a lot of wonderful direction, and kept us from flying blind sometimes, and that's, that's just immeasurable, so...
But you, you have a great staff, they, they take care of things.
Yeah, they do.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, okay, thank you, sir. I think that's the first time he's made a report in these sessions, so, uh, no, I'm teasing, he's probably made a few others, but, uh, thank you for your good words. Council, um, if you will be somewhat brief, we'll do council reports, and then we'll adjourn into the closed session, I guess, so, uh, why don't I start with Ms. Behringer here?
Can I have 15 minutes?
Sure, but we're gonna only listen for two, no.
Equal time, equal time.
Yeah.
Uh, now I don't have anything tonight.
Okay.
Twelve items.
No, you don't.
No, I don't, I'm just kidding, you got me. No, I do, I've only three. One, the, the Vandora Springs sidewalk was on the agenda, the consent agenda. I'm curious as to what the, the timeline for that completion is, Vandora Springs, the sidewalks?
The item that was on your consent agenda was to add some services for staking for right-of-way acquisitions, so, um, Mr. Raspberry, Attorney Raspberry, who's helped us with land matters, is gonna start that process for us, and I don't have a date, Mr. Dillinger, of whom we think we can bid it. If Mr. Johnson has a better update, I'll get it from him and pass it on, but I think we need to, this is, um, this is one of the first, uh, right-of-way acquisitions we've done since Mr. Anderson was here, and a project that's got some challenges to it, so I think we need to get those first, but we'll update you.
I was just, yeah, I was just curious, the other is, um, have we gotten any feedback from Raleigh on the Cloverdale letter about the Stub Road?
No, um, did Jeff Lee, seemed like there was...
He did.
Um, okay, I will, we don't, I, we can, if you sent an email, if we've got, heard anything back.
It seemed like that wasn't gonna go as smoothly for the applicant as they maybe was hoping.
Yeah.
But I can look back.
Raleigh staff did have to send the developer back to do something again, that, that it started the cl, a clock over, maybe not the clock over, but I, we'll get a more formal update to you.
Feedback they had to us about it. Um, the other is, do we have a, and I, I think John sent an email out, is there a new projected timeline for, uh, Amazon to finish? And what is the definition of substantially complete, given where, I know it won't be complete-complete, but what, whatever was sort of the standard for them for substantially complete when Joan Sausage in Garner and the rest, do we know?
Yeah, I think we're waiting for them to be complete on the roadwork, I mean...
Can I add further? Complete, and I don't have your email in front of you, but the email I forwarded to you, I believe, yesterday, there was a bulleted list of items that are, is the list that the, the town engineer who has to sign off on that and the developer agreed to. So, it includes, it includes the, the final lift of asphalt, it includes all the median work, it includes all seeding and grading, but we don't have to, like, wait for the grass to grow, kind of things. It does include the work being completed Garner Road, and we've expressed to them over and over that, you know, we were concerned about that not getting started. They have started doing that work now, there is work being done there. They, they had, they had hoped to not go past 30 days, so they're, they did not want to be going past September 18th themselves, but they've not ventured a day past that date.
Okay, sure, Mr. Vance.
Got the correspondence related to the liquidated damages for that.
Okay.
Accumulating, you all got that? Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I keep it, I keep it, I keep it quick here, but I don't want to direct this to Attorney Baggett, I wanna say I appreciate you really, because she came in during a time of, uh, in which we were dealing with a number of things that we didn't know exactly how they're gonna come out, one being the EPA concerns with the property that, uh, uh, with, which we didn't know exactly how it is gonna turn out, but it turned out well, and, uh, your calmness and your professionalism was excellent during that period, along with, uh, the current situation we're dealing with, we hate for help to, help to, uh, get, get us, uh, the necessary counsel to get us where we are now, to think this process through, which I believe is so important, uh, as to where we are and the times we are in this nation and in this world. Uh, so, uh, you are, have been a, 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 an example for me of professionalism and, um, calmness under fire, and, uh, one who allowed, uh, us to maintain our position as council with integrity, and, uh, you will, your, your services have been appreciated and are appreciated.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Vance, okay, I'll go here, Mr. Singleton.
Yes, well, um, Mr. Dillinger asked about the Vandora Springs sidewalk, and I have been asking about that off and off for some time. Last I heard, Mr. Johnson hopes that they'll be able to bid it sometime next spring, early summer, and, 'cause, 'cause I said, "Is it gonna be built by this time next year?" Not long ago, and he said he hoped it'd be completed by the fall of next year, which would be the sidewalk and the curb and gutter on, on both sides, to help clean up those stormwater issues they've had, so I hope it's on schedule for that. I want to thank y'all for the assistance with the lighting, and saw Mr. Forrest, I saw Forrest Jones as I was leaving today, he showed me the picture of what caused the problem, uh, apparently the lightning struck out there, and lights went out last night at South corner park, my soccer team was practicing, the baseball team, softball team, I'm sorry, and, uh, it happened before, but this was a little different, and apparently the lighting had hit the ground up there, and one of the cables went up to the, uh, interface out there, just exploded. And so, uh, uh, they got, on it today, they got Duke Energy out there, they fixed it and repaired, and lights are back up and working, so I appreciate that. I texted them last night, 'cause I, it was 7:30, there was, nobody was gonna come out there and look at it then, because practice ended at eight, but I just wanted to let them know, they sent me right back, let me know, they sent the forest, and they hopped right on, so I appreciate that. Mr. Baggett, I, I agree with everything that's been said, thank you for your professionalism and, uh, your advice. As we went on this process, I, I, I've learned to read between the lines sometime when you gave us some advice, and I figured out what you were, what you, I think you were saying, what you meant, and what your advice was, but you weren't as blunt as to say it, but I, I figured out a couple times by reading between the lines what you were trying to suggest, but you stayed down the middle of the road, so I appreciate your, uh, work, and, uh, yeah, I know with the, I know you're the lobbyist for the North Carolina Police Chiefs Association, and with COVID, that kind of extended that, I don't know if you do it virtually, or you talk to people, I'm assuming you do, I don't know, but...
Both.
You don't have, you don't have to, you weren't, you weren't walking the halls at the legislature this year, so...
No.
And you may not next year, who knows what may happen, but thank you for your time and your work, we appreciate it.
Mr. Matthews.
Yes, sir, I just wanted to comment, uh, I was talking about the crosswalks, they've been working, they look good out there, the ones on, uh, Timber Drive, and they were working out there today in front of the Y, and lining, had all the cones out, and doing big, and I'm eagerly anticipating them coming down the road to, uh, White Deer Crossing, and I'll give you a good report on that, I'll send you pictures, so, uh...
The Phil Matthews Crosswalk.
The Phil Matthews Crosswalk is my colleague's. But, uh, and regardless of our attorney, all I say is, sir, you have been a hoot, and I've enjoyed working with you.
Thank you. That's all I got to say about that.
Yeah. Okay, uh, the mayor doesn't have any report other than just to, uh, observe and note, I appreciate the, uh, the kind comments, uh, on, in regards to our ex-mayor. Had a chance to be in touch with, uh, his wife during the process, and, um, she expresses her appreciation for the town's concern and, uh, interest, so, um, we will, uh, we will, uh, move on that a little bit later on, probably, uh, for sure. So, with that, uh, Mr. Town Manager, if you'll give us a site for a closed session, I'm gonna declare about a five to 10-minute recess, and we'll re-adjourn in the closed session room.
Going to closed session to consult with the attorney, uh, pursuant to GS 143-318.11A1.
Okay, um, somebody want to make that motion in regards to this site in a second, okay? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, and any opposed, no, so I declare that, uh, we are now in closed session. I went into closed session to confer, uh, with attorney in regards to some litigation, and the, uh, council approved the recommendation of pending action that, um, uh, we will receive a report back on in the future. I believe that covers everything.
Yes.
Okay, uh, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn this session, uh, council?
I move.
Moved and seconded here, yes, okay, by Mr. Matthews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I declare us adjourned, thank you all.